...around to provide services to our students and be with them as they're dealing with the challenges. And everybody in our community who is, who is going through troublesome times with, with the current situation, Lord, just, just guide them and direct them and be with them and protect them, Lord, and keep them safe and healthy. And we just pray for your continued wisdom on all of us as we have this meeting here tonight, Lord, and just God direct us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, you've got the agenda in front of you. I hope everybody's had time to look over that. We have a discussion about the agenda. If not, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda presented.
Mr. Preston, make some motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you.
Second by who that? Ms. Miller, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Hi. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson, how did, were you a yea?
I can't understand you.
Were you a yes?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Leece.
All right, you have on the agenda the minutes from last month's meeting. I'm trying to get these. I've got all these little boxes on my screen that makes it hard to see. All right. I have totally shut y'all out of the minutes, haven't I? I'm jumping all over the place.
Can you take over the screen?
Yeah, I'll take over the screen and get the, get the Eboard meeting back up.
Can you pull it back up maybe? Same call Mr. Lotte earlier. I can play it and fix it.
Bear with us.
You can get reestablished, I will.
Yeah, I'm gonna get.
I will transfer it back to you.
My challenge is when I pull up the Eboard, I have all these windows with, with their faces and everything in it, and then it, it covers up my Eboard and I can't hardly navigate Eboard.
Should drag those up across the top.
All right, the minutes were posted on Eboard last week, so you've had a chance to review those. The Pleasance, the board will go ahead and place those minutes on the consent agenda for the regular meeting after this meeting. And we're gonna move on to the financial.
Beautiful, we can take our.
Yeah. Financial report. And in there we have several documents. The monthly financial report. You can see the total amount there. All right, if there's no questions about that, the next document that we have is the monthly financial report. The detailed report. Once again, this was loaded on Eboard earlier this week.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Preston.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And Dr. Leece, yeah, it looks like PAVT is really strong compared to what we had forecast. Have you gotten any indication on any changes coming from the legislature on how PAVT might be allocated in the future?
There was, there was legislation to change the allocation that was pending. I'm not sure if, if the governor has signed that. I don't think it's been signed yet. You know, they, they broke from the session, of course, you know that, and they've not reconvened, so until they reconvene and that, that legislation is finalized and signed by the governor, I'm, I don't know that it's, it's changed at this point. That's about the best I can do at this time, Mr. Preston.
No, that's fine. No, I appreciate it, thanks.
I will say that given the current economic crisis that we've got, I would expect it will go down. Then the next document that we have is the comparison report. And you can see this month in relation to previous months and years. We're trending in a positive direction, but I would say we need to be very cautious given the economics of the times. We are certainly in perilous times. And after listening to a report given from the House Committee today, Finance Committee, it's gonna be bleak for Georgia coming up. So we'll need everything we've got moving forward. And then the next document that we have is the East Flosk report. I know we've had conversations about the East Flosk revenue in the past. Ms. Yawn did, she did some research and while we knew this was lagging, the total is actually two months behind. So what you see there with 544,000, which is the second highest earnings we've ever had, but that is from actually two months back. So we've not seen the effects of the COVID yet.
I was, I was impressed. I was thinking it was one month, but it was two months.
Yes. She, she wanted to find that out for sure, and that's what we're looking at.
A good way to close out that flosk, so that's the last act of collection.
Yeah, that's the second. I went back and counted. I'm pretty sure if you go back and look, it's the second highest amount, and that February or January was the highest amount. So it's trending in a positive direction. Just hope we can get this COVID crisis behind us as soon as possible.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the East Flosk here as well.
Yes, sir.
Could you walk, can, I don't know if Ms. Yawn's on the call, but can you walk us through the accrued total collections received versus our obligations outstanding?
Yes, sir.
Whether it's expenditures or the, or the bond itself?
Yes, sir. And we had this same conversation. I, I had Ms. Yawn do some research on that earlier this week, because I thought that question might come up when you look at total collections received and then total expended. We hope to, to finish in the good with this flosk. It looks like we will, and I'm gonna see if she is on the phone and if she can explain that. Ms. Yawn, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes. The total expenditures reflect all the projects that we have done through the Flosk over, and then you have your revenues. We will be able to finish out the Performing Arts Center, and also we'll be making our final bond payments the month of July of this, our flosk funding from Flosk over. Does that help?
Yes. So is there any projection that we'll have a fund balance on this particular flosk series?
We could have a small sum balance once everything is, is done at Performing Arts Center, yes.
Okay, all right. And is it mine, with the East Flosk, that what we need to do is moving forward, since there's already another East Flosk in place to follow this one, is we, we need to utilize the monies in this particular East Flosk?
Yes.
In a particular timeframe? We can, I hate to use the term roll those funds over, but they'll, they're, they're available, they don't, they don't expire, they just.
No, no, they're on time. They'll be in our account for us to, you know, our, our expenses are to finish out the Performing Arts Center and any additional expenditures we may have with that building. And that should complete those funds.
Okay.
Well, part of that flosk also was the CHS renovation, so anything we've got left over, we're still, we're still doing those projects we can use.
Yes, sir.
Could we not?
Good point, yes.
I guess my, my question, that we're, we're obligated really to spend this fund, this East Flosk before we start with the next. I know we did a, anyway, that was really my question. I, I don't want us to get in a situation where we've got East Flosk money from a series back still on the books.
Yes.
That we need to utilize, right?
I think given the current financial crisis we're in, we'll need every bit of this that we, we have at our disposal, so it will be.
If, if any money is left over, you can, you know, spend it to however you choose to, is that what you're saying about the East Flosk?
As long as it's within the law and the limits of what East Flosk can be spent on, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and Ms. Wilson, my question wasn't so much that we spend it on anything, it's more that how, in the order in which we spend it. That, that we clear this book out before moving on to the next, that's all.
All right. Are there any questions about the financial reports? If there's no questions, we'll place those on the consent agenda for approval at the regular meeting following this meeting. Painting Eastside Elementary Hallways. We have, we have a need at Eastside, the, the paint there and the interior of the building needs, needs painting, and we have some crews working out at the Performing Arts Center and such, and there were some painting crews here in town, and also we do have a local painting vendor in town. And so Mr. Spikes had inquired if we could get an estimate on painting the interior of Eastside, the hallways. And so I told him to move forward with getting a quote on the painting the hallways at Eastside, and he did that, and you'll see, this is the, the two quoted prices from two separate vendors for painting the interior of Eastside. And I'm asking the board to approve tonight the, the painting of the interior of Eastside for $27,000 by Intercontinental Commercial Services. See, we get out the local vendor who did, but they were nowhere close to the, the Intercontinental, so.
Our background noise is back and it's actually talking when you're speaking, though.
All right.
Ms. Yawn, can you, if you can hear me, can you mute your microphone?
This is a bid to, or a proposal to paint the interior at Eastside? Are there any questions?
Quick question on the, that's not the group that did the last painting, that's.
I'm not, I'm not sure, Mr. Preston. I know Mr. Spikes worked on this, and we had this group before, Intercontinental. I do know that.
I guess my point is whoever, whoever did the last job, we haven't gotten a lot how you are out of that ever. I'll put it that way. I'll be diplomatic.
Yes, sir.
Dismissed. I should be in the bigger action.
Yes, sir. If y'all want to table it, we can table it and see if this is the same.
I, I, well, it's, I mean, I'm, no, I mean, it needs to be done, it just, we need better results out of whoever, you know, I, I, that problem going with the provider, it just.
Yes, sir.
Yes, something is putting paint over peeling paint, it's gonna continue to peel.
That's right.
But there needs to be some work done on that, on that facility.
Are we going to, we'll have to have a call, a meeting sometime in this month.
Yeah.
Table it back, see who that is, and then we'll.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have two meetings in June for budget purposes, so we can easily table this and come back to the board with some more information.
I mean, make sure that's not.
Yeah.
What you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable doing that.
No, I, I, you know, I, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the.
But I'm, I'm like you though, Mr. Preston, I don't want this to be the same group that did it last time, and we're not pleased with their work, and then we may want some stipulations put into it.
Well, I was gonna say it, I'm fine with doing it, but I'd like to make sure that this is, I guess, this one again.
Yes, sir.
And if we can bring it back.
I will, I'll recommend that we, we pull this off the consent agenda and that we, we do some research on this company and we put in a retainer.
Like I said, my question is, is the price that it is.
Yes, sir.
That's, I'm sorry, that's, that's really annoying, starting and stopping.
Is this the same company? Because I can't really understand what y'all saying, though.
It's very hard to hear anything right now.
How about this, everybody but, I was gonna say, everybody but the board members, get off of it, and let's see what happens. But how about that?
I don't hear any standing now, so.
I was gonna say, it's good now, so let's keep rolling.
Okay. What we're trying to say is whether or not to table this for our next meeting, which we'll be back sometime in this month, and find out and get a little bit more information about this company, or we look to pass this with stipulation that this is not.
We could get our legal counsel to, to draft an agreement that if we're, you know, we can do a retainer and we're not satisfied, we could put some stipulations. Can we do that, counsel?
Yes, sir, or Mr. Lotte. And the reason I'm, the reason I'm bringing it up is because I, I know that we, it has not been that long ago that Eastside's interior was painted, and literally within the first month, we, we had peeling paint. There was no prep work, very little prep work done. It was.
So it's just the same company?
I, I don't know.
This is the same.
Well, I tell you what, let me just take this off the consent agenda, and there's just too many questions about this, and we'll, we'll bring it back. We're gonna have to meet within the next two weeks for a budget, budget hearing, so we'll, we'll get more information and come back to the board with this. Think it'll be the end. All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hope, maybe next time we meet, we'll be meeting in person, and so hopefully, maybe. All right. Digital Learning Grant, Westside Elementary School. We received earlier this month a digital learning grant, and this is for Westside Elementary School, and you will see that it's a significant amount, that we're excited about Westside receiving $133,800 to go towards digital learning. And Ms. Jowers and her staff did a great job writing this grant along with support with Ms. Kim Miller, and they, they worked together to hammer out this grant application, and we're real excited about them receiving this funding. Got me out of assembly again.
I'll say, while you're pulling that up, I appreciate everybody that was involved in that. And last time, we were trying to figure out ways to, you know, work through budgets and stuff. We had a lot of our, you know, staff that did a lot of work in giving grants and things like that, and, and, you know, that's something that's gonna be big over the next few months. I mean, that's money we don't have to pay back, that's, that's pretty.
That's right.
About saying. So everybody took their time and, and put their efforts into that money, I mean, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, that fits our school system, that we're gonna need all, all, all the money we can get over the next year or two, and any way we can get it like this, you know, pays off. So I appreciate Ms. Jowers and her staff, and Ms. Miller, and everybody that took the time to write up that grant.
We are going to continue to pursue funding like that, and, and so we're hoping some good things happen in the future also, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, CARES Act grant. We have the CARES Act grant funding that was released as part of the COVID response from the federal government. You'll see that the Coffee County School System, this is straight out of our account with the state or portal. This is how we manage grants in state, $2,640,115 in CARES grant funding. The, this is a document that shows what our FY20 initial state allotment will be. Our projected 14% state reduction, all right? The, the House and Senate Finance Committees met last week along with the governor, and they announced a 14% reduction. So this gives us $7,798,344 reduction. And then you'll see the CARES grant, $2,565,115. And so when we apply the CARES grant funding, we can put the CARES grant funding into our budget to help offset that 14%. We'll still be left with a $5,233,229 reduction in state funding. So we're looking at a very dire situation in reduction in state funding from, as a result of the COVID-19. We've begun meeting and working on how we'll address this as a school system, but this is very serious news that gives us a lot of reason to proceed with caution in the near future. But I wanted to present how we plan to use that CARES Act funding. It won't be used just for stuff that we'd like, it's gonna be used for things that we have to have, like paying salaries and covering expenses and things. So the CARES Act funding has already been spent, essentially. Is that painting a pretty clear picture, Mr. Lotte?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Quick, quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Leece, on the initial state allotment, how does that compare to, can you compare that with FY19 at all?
That is, that is, that is the FY20 allotment. What they did, they took the FY20 allotment and cut 14% off of it. Ms. Yawn, are you on the line?
I, I guess where I'm, I guess where I'm going is, is when was the last time we operated under a state allotment less than FY20?
Possibly never. Oh, oh, less than FY20, yes. We've operated, yeah, with less, for sure.
I, yeah, I guess, I mean, just, you know, just kind of recollect how we operated and.
Yeah, we, we, we will take similar measures that we've had to take in the past. We've not seen a reduction of state funding like this since the Great Recession. This is very similar to the cuts that we incurred in '08, '09, '10, '11, very similar cuts. The difference is, is in those times, the cuts started in '02, '03, '04, '05, '06, they were smaller cuts, and then they resulted with the large reductions in funding in '08, '09, '10. reductions in funding in oh-eight, oh-nine, oh-ten, and, uh, so if there is an upside to this, it's happened all at once. We were fully funded, the QB formula was funded last year. It was the first time that it had been fully funded in years. So we're going into this in a lot different situation than we did, uh, in the previous recession. But this is very similar to the recession of, of, uh, oh-eight, oh-nine, ten, eleven. And we know how long that took to, to recover from, so, uh, we're gonna be very cautious, we're gonna watch our spending, we're gonna work on ways to reduce spending and to get smaller. Are there any other questions, comments?
Uh, just a comment, I mean, you know, anytime you've got to take a reduction of five or two million dollars of what you thought you were gonna have, it's not gonna be easy. Uh, you know, Ms. Yaw and her staff are, are gonna have a lot of, uh, a lot of struggles to make this work, you know, you, you and your staff gonna have a lot of struggles than we are. But the difference between now and then, if you back us in our financial report just a minute ago, you know, we came into this about as healthy financially as a school system as we could, so that gives us, you know, a little bit of leeway, you know, more options, I guess, to be able to handle this, um, than having to look into it like we were ten years ago. So we are in a good position, you know, to, to try to make something like this work, I, you know, and I think that, you know, we've had discussions about how to do it, it's, you know, um, it's not gonna be easy, but at least we came into this in a good position, so, you know, we're, we're gonna make it work, we're gonna manage it, and we're gonna come out in the other end in good shape. That's just, that's how it's gonna, it's gotta happen, I mean, you just gotta make it work, what you got.
Yes, sir. Fortunately, we will have that CARES Act funding to help plug the gap and then we're gonna work on some things internally.
Well, I make believe that and then what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
You take that off, you're looking at five, four, two, that we've got to try to, you know.
Yes, sir.
Work within that range.
All right, are there any questions about the CARES Act grant? Policies, we had much discussion over the last couple of months about this travel policy. We made, uh, the changes that we discussed in our last meeting. And, uh, I'll pull this up. The part that we discussed the most the last time was instructional time laws for extracurricular activities shall not exceed one school day unless otherwise approved by the principal slash assistant principal or athletic director, so that gives the principal opportunity to, let's say that he's out of town or has a, a health issue or something and is not there to be able to approve something, then the assistant principal or athletic director who's working as his designate could, could approve something in his absence. All right, are there any, any questions about this travel policy? We will be asking the board to approve these changes tonight. And it basically changes out of state to three hundred miles or more, just a big change. Student handbook. Dr. Banks has been doing a lot of work on this and, and we just summarized the handbook changes in, uh, this document. And I know we had some discussion about this at our last meeting. These are the changes for the upcoming year. Uh, shirts, we had quite a bit of discussion with our middle school, high school, ninth grade principals and, uh, the shirt tucking, that was something that was discussed and, and, uh, changing the handbook in that regard. We had discussion about these frays and frills and holes and such, and in our last meeting, the phrase is patches are not allowed, we're gonna take that out of the draft handbook, so, uh, I think we were all uncomfortable with the idea that we wouldn't allow patches on a pair of jeans that are aesthetically pleasing and, and are not inappropriate. There's no reason to not allow a patch on a pair of jeans if it's, if it's appropriate. So we're just gonna remove patches are not allowed from the handbook. And then there was some concern certainly about the statement regarding knives. Uh, we'll read no knives allowed. Uh, two inches or more will be removed. There was, uh, in a, in a, the first draft that was presented, there was a section that mentioned no knives more than two inches are allowed. I felt like it was a consensus in the board and myself and the administration that we don't want any knives allowed within our buildings. So, uh, that's the way the rule will read, two inches or more will be removed. And then, uh, there were some other things, slapboxing will be included with kicking and shoving and such as that. And there was a statement about threats. Uh, Dr. Banks, uh, worked with Buette County Schools and uh, replicated their threat statement straight out of their handbook from Buette County Schools, they do a really good job to uh, insert this threat statement, so I, I really like that, it's very inclusive. So those are the proposed changes for the handbook. Dr. Banks, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you wanna make any comments about any of that?
No, it's, it's well, you will, it was well said, I mean, you explained it well. Uh, I just wanna know if the board will have any questions about anything, I mean, I think it's good.
All right. We're not asking for formal approval tonight of the handbook, our plan was to come back at one of these call meetings we're gonna have to have in the future to make sure everybody's good with the handbook and then ask for final.
One question that I have.
Yes.
One question that I have, is this, um, is, is the dress code, is this, um, for the students only, um, for staff, um, as students?
This is a student dress code. We have a professional staff dress code policy, we have a policy concerns, uh, staff dress that we use for staff.
So the staff, um, dress code is different than the, the students, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering about that, I know, you know, they had a lot of complaints about the staff wearing the real short dresses and the students couldn't, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That was just, um, one of the things that I just wanted to get a clear, um, answer to, that they are entitled to wear the thin, short dresses with their thong showing versus the kids being able to wear this.
No, I, I wouldn't approve of anybody wearing a thin, short skirt with a thong showing, no, that would certainly be inappropriate, whether they're an employee or a student.
Just checking.
Yes, ma'am. If an employee had that, they would be expected to go home and change and come back and something else. All right, uh, COVID nineteen update and planning. We wanted to present an update to the board where we're at with the current situation involving COVID nineteen. Ms. Miller, are you on the line? I can't hear you. Can't hear you. We can't hear you, I'll talk through it. We've got the update for the board tonight, uh, teaching and learning, of course, we've talked through some of this already on May eleventh and thirteenth, uh, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, instructional materials, library books, learning packets and textbooks and Chromebooks will be returned to all elementary schools and middle school. On May fourteenth and fifteenth, instructional materials and Chromebooks will be returned to Coffee High School and the Career Academy in George Washington. Specific times and locations for returning devices and materials of these schools will be sent out to parents and students. The Coffee County School System is working on plans for the return of students for the two thousand, twenty, twenty-one school year. I will add, board members, that we're gonna have a series of meetings with administration and academic leaders, uh, throughout the district and other support staff. We're gonna have our first meeting next week to plan for the return of students. And then we're gonna have a follow-up meeting the next week, I think we've got three weeks marked off to meet and plan, uh, the return of students, and we're gonna work, a simple way of putting it, we will have a Plan A, which is very much a traditional start, much like when we left before COVID. And then we're gonna have a Plan B that addresses if the situation is not improved or different scenarios when students do return, so we want to be prepared for what might be a traditional start under normal circumstances or pre-COVID circumstances, and then we wanna have a start that would handle, uh, from, from the simplest changes that we have to make to the most extreme changes, uh, that we have to make. So we're gonna prepare for, uh, best case scenario and worst case scenario when it comes to COVID and the return of students. I've been asked a number of times, uh, I have, have we considered changing the calendar at this point? We, we've not seen a need to change the start date or anything like that. Uh, currently, the information we have is that, uh, you know, the scenario of starting August seventh versus starting September seventh, uh, that we see no need to adjust the calendar at this point. Uh, the situations involving the spread of COVID and such, at this point, we don't perceive being calendar related as much as, as, uh, data related at that time, so, uh, that's where we're at with COVID planning and the return of students. But safety is forefront of all of our decisions. About. We'll update the board on our plans as we move forward. Pre-K drive-through registration will be May twenty-first at each elementary school, we're gonna do pre-K registration different this year, in the past, we've done it at the middle school and all the parents would come from the four elementary schools and do the registration, then another day, the four other elementary schools, they would come. We're gonna do the pre-K registration on May twenty-first at each elementary school. And, uh, parents will drive through, it will be a drive-through registration at the elementary schools for pre-K on May twenty-first. And then kindergarten registration is planned for June eleventh from eight AM to eleven AM at each elementary school, we're gonna replicate the plan that we use for pre-K for kindergarten registration. Ms. Miller and, and, uh, Ms. Thompson with pre-K and our principals have been working out the plans and the, the logistics of doing pre-K registration and kindergarten registration. And then, uh, the Coffee County School System, we're gonna resume normal operations the week of June first. All of our eleven and twelve-month staff will begin working their normal, normal summer schedule activities for summer, we're planning to, to start up June first. Uh, the Coffee County Board of Education and Schools will be open Monday through Thursday from seven-thirty to five-thirty. So, June first, we're telling our folks to be prepared for a normal workday. Those who will be working and we go back to normal operations June first. Of course, with interventions in place that we need to follow as far as hygiene and hand washing and hand sanitizer and if masks are still uh, in order at that time, wearing a mask and such as that. Uh, and then graduation at Coffee High School and Wiregrass will be held at Jardine Stadium June twentieth at eight AM at Dana Jardine Stadium, so we are planning for graduation to be held at Jardine Stadium on June twentieth at eight AM. Now certainly, there will have to be some mitigations put in place, uh, because of COVID nineteen. Uh, students may be issued tickets and there could be, uh, a specified number of tickets that each student would be allocated to attend. Uh, we will be following guidance from healthcare officials and such as that as we move forward and best practices that are recommended uh, for holding an event at that time, but, but at that point, the emergency orders that have been, uh, handed down from the state will have expired, so our plan is to have a graduation ceremony on June twentieth at, at eight AM at Dana Jardine Stadium. Are there any questions about the COVID nineteen update and planning?
As far as the graduation, and I know we, we got a long time until that date, we'll see what things look like then, but now, e- even in prior years, we've livestreamed that, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so even if on June the twentieth, you have, you have some people that still would like to watch it, they can do that if they don't want to come to the state.
Right, okay, we'll do that, we'll go ahead and get some messaging out about that, uh.
That's what I thought we had done in the past.
We've done it about five years.
Okay.
I can't understand you good, I couldn't hear you, but it's still, you know, quite a bit of static going on.
Yeah, it's kinda coming and going, Ms. Wilkerson, can you?
Yeah, they were talking about live streaming the, the graduation ceremony, we will livestream the graduation ceremony, so people who are immunocompromised or have a, a need to certainly not be there, we'll livestream the graduation ceremony for all to see.
Guys, we're still getting some feedback, pretty significant here, um, I know it's a little inconvenient, but if you're not speaking at the moment, if you could please mute your microphone, that would hopefully eliminate some of the feedback we're getting.
All right, summer feeding program. We asked, uh, Ms., uh, Lewis to present the summer feeding program, since that will be starting up uh, Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. Ms. Lewis, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm on the line, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear. You wanna tell us about the summer feeding program?
Yes, sir, we have met, put in place our plans for the summer meal program, our last meal service for the current program that we're doing will end, will be, the last delivery will be May twentieth. And then we will move straight into the summer program on May twenty-sixth, it will end on July the seventh. Depending on what is going on at that time, we may extend it, we'll just look at the circumstances as to how many people are still interested in participating in the program. We have selected the elementary sites, we'll be using six elementary schools and we have three community partners who are gonna open up their facilities to assist with us in serving, and then we have eight locations that our buses will also be stopping at to provide. And it'll be a five-day service, so when we, we'll drop off on Tuesdays and they'll be provided with enough meals, enough items to last for five days for breakfast and lunch with the program.
That's great. Are there any questions about the feeding program, Ms. Wilkerson?
Yes, um, I have a, a question about, um, what, my neighbor, he is, um, he's older than eighteen, but he, um, um, has been in this special ed- education program there for, um, years. I don't know the program that they call it, um, where the children still go up to twenty, um, something years, they'll be older and still participating in some of the high school, um, functions. And, uh, and, and I was wondering what he had been wondering about, can he get in at lunch?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, um, anything from the buses.
That's a very good question, Ms. Wilkerson, if he is twenty-one or under and participating in the special education program through the school system, he is eligible to participate in this program.
He is not participating in the program right now, um, he, in fact, I think he's about twenty-three. Um, but he is, um, he's real slow and, um, so he's not working at anything. And so he's not working on anything, you know, you know, but he was wondering about that. He asked me, he come over and asked me a couple of days about will he be able to get lunch off the bus? Because he was, you know, he said he was hungry and, and wanted something to eat. And so he had to depend on his mother and his brother. He lives with his brother across the street, but he had to depend on them bringing him food. And so it was just something he had saw me at the bus getting lunch for my kids. And he asked with that, you know, will he be eligible to get, to receive those lunches?
If, if he is still, if he is participating, like I said, in a current Coffey County School System program, then he would be eligible.
All right.
Like I said, he is not, so that means he won't be eligible to get anything, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And he would have to be 21 or under.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, due to COVID-19, we have waived audience participation. I have no need for an executive session right now. Our plan was just to adjourn this meeting at 7:29, so we're right on schedule. Mr. Chairman, it's your pleasure to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and then we'll start up our regular monthly meeting.
Anybody have a five-minute break? We'll get right into it.
I think I'm good to go right into it.
All right, we'll adjourn this meeting.